Meeting of the zoning Board of Appeals will now come to order. Please call the roll.
Mr. Wood? Mr. DeSona?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Present.
Mr. Callen?
Present.
Mrs. Curley?
Present.
Motion to accept the minutes for the last regular meeting of October seventeenth, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Callen, seconded by Mr. Cole. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. First case, number nine eight oh three, thirty-two City Hall Square. Petition of St. Teresa House by its attorney, James Moore, to allow construction of an additional third dwelling unit below grade in an existing non-conforming structure located in zoning district CBD previously approved for two B low-grade dwelling units. Is your attorney here?
I am.
Oh.
At least I was this morning when I left.
No, you know what I thought you were? You looked so holy, I thought you were one of the...
Oh, boy.
I did.
I'm impersonating, I'm here to impersonate Richie Cuff.
Oh, no, please. I love the man, I love him to death, but don't read the whole thing, you already sent us.
No, I won't.
Thank you.
But I'll just make a comment if I could. My name is James Moore, I'm an attorney in Lynn, Massachusetts, and I am here to speak on behalf of the petition. The petitioner is the owner of the property at thirty-two City Hall Square and seeks relief from the Lynn zoning ordinance to allow the addition within the existing building of one additional dwelling unit, bringing the total number of dwelling units from thirty-two to thirty-three. The additional dwelling unit to be located in the space below the first floor, bringing the number of dwelling units below the first floor from two to three. The building in question is commonly known as the St. Teresa House, has been part of the St. Mary's Parish campus for decades. The structure serves as the home for the Sisters of St. Joseph, who taught at St. Mary's High School until the mid nineteen nineties, when the last of the Sisters departed from their teaching positions. The petitioner is a nonprofit corporation which owns and operates the St. Teresa House. The conversion of the St. Teresa House from a convent to its present use as an elderly housing facility was the result of a variance granted by the City of Lynn Board of Appeals, case number eight eight five eight, in December of two thousand and two. The petitioner plans to initially use the additional unit to house an in-house resident worker, thus providing the facility with a more economical security and maintenance service. Depending on the success of this arrangement, and perhaps changes in technology, the future use of the unit may remain the same or may be used as an additional elderly resident. There will be no changes in the exterior of the building. It is submitted that the requested zoning relief may be granted without any adverse impact on the surrounding area. The board is well aware of the criteria for granting a zoning variance, so I'm not going to bother to go over that for you. In view of the foregoing, the petitioner urges the board for a favorable consideration of its various applications before. Thank you very much.
Well, we've all been there. So, are there any questions from the board?
I have no questions.
You do leave, don't you?
I have none.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none, hearing is closed for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Hearing none, hearing is closed for those wishing to speak in opposition. What is the wish of the board?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Callen, seconded by Mr. Cole to grant. Please call the roll.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. DeSona?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, to grant.
Mrs. Curley?
Yes.
Thank, thank the board very much for his time and attention.
You're very welcome.
I had submitted a proposal for a decision. Had a couple of typos in it, so I got a, I got a new one for you here. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Moffler?
Oh, oh, we're just waiting for your answer.
All right. And will you be able to give me all this stuff?
Sure. You can better?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number nine eight oh two sixty-three, Tran Fabulier Ave. Petitioner Emily Dotzius, I hope I said that right?
Yes.
To allow alteration and enclosure of an existing four-by-four platform within the minimum side yard setback, three feet, three inches, of an existing non-conforming single-family residence located upon an undersized lot, four thousand nine hundred and fifty square feet, having insufficient frontage, fifty-five feet, in zoning district R2, to establish an attached four-by-eight mudroom. Do you want to come up before the board? Come on. Just give your name and address to the secretary, please.
My name is David Lejeune, I live at one sixteen Walde Street, second floor. We just wanted to change the existing four-by-four to a four-by-eight mudroom.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, are you the builder?
Yes.
Oh.
I'm, I'm working with Trahan Construction, yes. I'm the builder on, for his business.
Who's your name again?
David Lejeune.
Lejeune?
Lejeune.
Lejeune.
One sixty-two Walde Street, second floor. Thank you.
So is it four-by-eight?
The mudroom will be four, four-by-eight.
What's the width of the porch?
Yeah.
It's four feet off of the building, probably.
Well, it's the same as the...
It'll be off, the same, it'll just be longer to the back of the building.
Now, when I was there Sunday and I rang your doorbell, and she showed me across the street, there were three different houses that had this, and you said to me it's going to be the small one.
Right, exactly.
In that taupe color house.
Correct.
It's really just enough to cover the stairs.
Exactly, pretty much, yes.
So, this here is a certified block name you have here, and that is the area that you proposed.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
What is the date on this block plan?
Two thousand twenty-eight.
It's two thousand...
It's ten twenty-seven, two thousand fifteen.
Oh, fifteen, so it's called, pretty recent, yeah. And the stairs are down there, I mean.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think that would be on.
Any other questions from the board?
I have no questions.
You can sit down.
Oh, okay.
Anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
I can speak in favor. Am I allowed?
Of course.
Um, main reason I want to build it is because I'm losing heat from that area, and if I have to cover the porch, that'll keep some of the heat in. The other reason is, um, during heavy rain like this, a lot of it comes into the kitchen because of the storm door. It depends, if it's coming from the west, it comes into the kitchen. Same thing with the snow, and the snow piles up, up against, um, the interior door and between the storm door. So those are, um, a couple of main reasons why I want to do it, and it'll give me a little bit of extra space in case I want to put shoes there, too.
Probably why everybody across the street does the same thing.
Right, exactly.
Not a bad idea, but not...
It's, it's actually a very good idea, yes, especially to keep the heat from the kitchen, because I'm losing all our heat on the kitchen.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for this petition? Hearing none, the hearing is closed for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Hearing none, the hearing is closed for those wishing to speak in opposition. I have a letter here from John Walsh, who was the counselor for that ward, Ward seven. Dear Chairperson Curley, I am writing this letter in support of the above-mentioned petition to allow the alteration and enclosure of an existing platform for the purpose of establishing an attached four-by-eight mudroom. I have received no opposition from the neighborhood. I fully support the approval of said petition and ask your honorable body to grant. Thank you in advance for your attention to this matter. What is the wish of the board?
Motion to grant.
Motion made by Mr. Cole, seconded by Mr. Callen to grant. Please call the roll.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. DeSona?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, to grant.
Mrs. Curley?
Yes, to grant.
Petition has been granted?
Yes.
Case number nine eight oh four eighty-six Kernwood Drive. Petitioner Michael McBride by his attorney, Samuel Vitale, to allow construction of a two-story, single-family dwelling on an undersized lot, eight thousand two hundred and ten square feet, in zoning district R1, to replace an existing non-conforming, single-family residence.
Mrs. Curley, I'm attorney, seconded by Kevin Woodney.
I'd like your time.
Thank you.
It's, uh, Mike McBride.
Mike is a firefighter in the city of Lynn, he lives across the street from this property. He proposes to build a single-family dwelling, uh, and demolish the existing dwelling. That we have the conservation commission, uh, two weeks ago, um, to get permission because we are joining in the above the letter, uh, in the pond, and what, uh, they also allowed, since he's a firefighter, we wanted to use the home for training for firefighters, so maybe people engaged in previous activities with firefighters are engaged. Conservation had no problem with that. At the end of the proceedings, um, we told them that we also had to come, uh, before you, but they did grant approval, uh, for the construction of a new dwelling because of its proximity, uh, to the pond. What he proposes is a brand-new, single-family home, it'd be modular, it'd be two-story dwelling, uh, the existing dwelling was built, I think, in the forties, it's in disrepair, and, uh, I think if it removed, uh, the property would be problematic in terms of its impact on the neighborhood, and replace it with, uh, a newer dwelling. Let me just look at my other folder for you in a second. We have Mr. Reed do a plan for the Conservation Commission and for the board, uh, and Mike, uh, wishing to... Do you have the folder? I don't see the house.
There isn't a house, there's just rooms.
I have a folder with the front elevation, with the landscaping.
What's this house going to look like?
Excuse me?
What's this house going to look like?
I, that's the folder I'm looking at.
Oh, that's the folder you're looking for?
I said, front elevation, it's, uh, I don't know, maybe you took my folder. What did I do with my folder? So, probably I was breaking down. And then we have the floor plan as well. I don't know, took that one. Got a few more.
You, you expect us to look at this and think it's wonderful?
It isn't whether it's wonderful.
Yeah?
It's whether it's a single-family home that is the only reason it's here, it's on a undersized lot.
Where's the size? Where's the back? Where's something? All this is, is a square with a bunch of windows and a door.
That's the front elevation. The modular was prepared by, as you can see there, the modular company's contractor.
It's my, uh, it's my assessment, so if we're together, you want to hide what we do?
We had, we had a folder that showed, well, the other thing that it had, we had a plan, Mr. Reed, that showed it, onsite parking of two vehicles. We had a plan that showed the landscaping, but as far as the dwelling, there's a floor plan that was submitted, uh, with the dimensions of the building, and in previously when we filed, we got a color photograph of the proposed structure. But the reason we're here is, the lot is undersized, the lot's never going to change.
Do we have that?
It's been this size since it was created.
Why do we have to have four bedrooms in a small house?
It's a single-family home, and, and let me just tell you something, and I don't mean it to be disrespectful, but it is a fact, that the zoning statute says that the Board of Appeals has no jurisdiction on the interior of a single-family home.
Has four bedrooms and only two parking spaces, that's what I'm concerned about.
I understand that. Zone ordinance requires two drawn, for a single-family dwelling, two parking spaces. We meet that requirement. We're not asking for a variance for parking. We're at, the only reason we're here is we're replacing an existing, single-family that's in disrepair and old, with a new one, on a lot that's been undersized since the day it was created. It has the requisite frontage, more than double, it's eighty-seven feet frontage. We've gotten Conservation Commission approval, uh, with respect to the work that's going to be done. It's a single-family home in a single-family district. And, uh, we had a plan prepared that showed the parking, that showed the landscaping.
We have that.
We have that.
As I say, it joins the pond, it's of a regular shape, uh, the house would be set further back than the, uh, and in terms of effect on the neighborhood, he lives in, he's across the street?
I know. But a few weeks ago, you came before this board, and there was another discussion about how many bedrooms, and you never brought up this about, we have no...
Well, I went and looked it up to tell you the truth. You have jur, I didn't say you didn't have it, I just said, I looked it up, it's just, I can't change the state law. Forty-eight, section three of the...
But you never brought this up before, that's the only reason I'm asking.
Because, because it's being repeated, and I wondered what, uh, you and I had a discussion before about where people put their kitchens, okay? And I think I pointed out to you, my neighbor across the street, you walk around his house, his kitchen is there. It's a single-family home. I'm just telling you that, you don't have a quarrel with me.
I'm not arguing with you, I'm just asking you.
It's the state statute that says...
This is the first time you look at this.
That in a single-family dwelling, the state zoning law doesn't apply to the interior of a single-family dwelling. This is a single-family dwelling.
I was going to do a three-bedroom at first, but I have four kids, so...
You're going to move in there?
Yes, I'm moving in. I live across, I'm going to sell the house across the street, the kids want to, they want to live on the pond, I want to be on the pond there.
You don't blame them.
Yeah. It's a better location, the kids don't have to move school, it's not a farm move, so I'm not just building it and getting rid of it.
Well, no, what, I'm, I'm glad to hear you say that.
Yeah.
He's a local, he's a firefighter, he went fighting.
And the house right now, the fire department shut it down like two years ago, because the deck on the back was falling down, so they went by there, they made it tear it off, and now the whole right rear side...
So you relocated the new house further towards the street, is that it?
I think it's moving like...
In other words, where was the old footprint?
Um, it's, it's real.
Yeah.
It's close, yeah.
I measured it open, I think it's like, uh, it might be two feet closer to the zone in the pond.
No, but I'm only saying, you, you reached, I mean, like, you moved it forward, so you have a, you know, more room in the back.
Which is a good idea.
There's another reason.
They're going to put a deck on the back, so you can...
That's what I'm saying.
The other reason is that the Lynn Conservation Commission has a thirty-foot, you know, it disturbs...
Right, yes.
So we were trying to get out of the thirty...
Thirty-foot, yeah.
When I was there, your neighbor that lives right across the street came over to know what I was doing, and I said I was the Board of Appeals, he said, well, you can go in, the door is open. I said, well, when I went to walk by the garage, I mean, what was it, a missing, you can look down like fifteen feet, there's nothing, I says, you know, he's going to tear it down, why would I want to go?
So, what about the fire department?
Yeah, the fire department.
For training purposes?
Oh, that's training, yeah.
Be there tomorrow, as long as we...
Oh, that's good. That's good, you can use it for training, and it's wonderful, that's another asset.
Any other questions from the board?
I have none.
How is the water access right there?
The water access? It's, it's a big slow current now.
So you can, does it extend here?
The ditch has like, uh, it's probably like three-quarter to inch, like, stones, and then, and then it's just vegetation up there, it's pretty, it's a pretty steep draw.
So you gotta wear sneakers, you can't go barefoot.
What's that?
You gotta wear sneakers.
Oh, yeah, you can't go down there, but I don't think I would love the kids going swimming down there anyways. I swam in there when I was a kid, but I don't think it's, uh...
It's a good point to swim, but you, like you said, it's, it's...
It's a good access, yeah.
It's on the other end.
Yeah, it's more just, just for us to be able to see the water.
Oh, yeah. So, for a little, for a little, um, little rafting, might get you a little, absolutely.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none, the hearing is closed for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Hearing none, the hearing is closed for those wishing to speak in opposition. Please call the roll.
Motion to be granted.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Callen, seconded by Mr. Cole to grant. Please call the roll.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. DeSona?
Yes, to grant.
Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, to grant.
Mrs. Curley? Case number nine eight oh one, one thirty-nine, one forty-one, Nahan Street. Petitioner one thirty-nine, Nahan Street LLC by its attorney, Samuel Vitale, to allow basement alteration to an existing, non-conforming, two-family residence in zoning district R5, located upon an undersized lot, six thousand three hundred and twelve square feet, having insufficient frontage, forty-seven point sixty-six feet, and existing parking spaces within minimally required setbacks, to create additional residential dwelling space for human occupancy below street level grade.
I just want to say that.
You're welcome.
I'm attorney Vitale, this is Gary Giannino, is the chief executive officer of the petitioner, Patrick Kane is the property manager. This group of individuals bought, um, three hundred units of housing in Lynn. Uh, I think we were before you, and when we got approval, uh, for what is now the District Forty-five restaurant, which is one of the commercial properties that they bought, um, when they bought, uh, many units from the Gilbert family. They have maintained and developed those, uh, they own the property, it joins and it butts this. When they acquired this property, it had an existing, uh, unit, Patrick, uh, met with the building department, discussed that unit, uh, and I think it was Keith that he met with, uh, and they said to him, you will probably have to put in, uh, a second means of egress, you're going to have to put in, uh, one of those escape-sized windows. But then I suggested to them that even if we got approval, that they would have to sprinkler, uh, because of the change in use group, and they were prepared to sprinkle the, uh, unit, and then we dealt with the packet, they own the adjoining property, which is immediately adjacent, uh, and it would be the access to the two additional spaces that would come from this, of this property, to the adjoining property for two spaces. There's an existing right-of-way that's been there for years, that comes in, uh, off Tudor Street, that allows for one space at the rear, uh, and then the first time I saw the property, I was with Patrick, there were two spaces existing in the driveway. So that the reading of the notice that you read was to cover essentially those topics, but the two spaces that are in the front, uh, don't have the requisite five-foot buffer, and they exist, the driveways, they are, people are parked there since the nineteen thirties. Speaking of the nineteen thirties, in nineteen thirty-nine, the Board of Appeals approved a basement unit. It appears that there were two buildings, and they took down one at the rear, and it's been a very use in the back, and it's been, uh, at one point, I believe it was a dwelling, and then it came down, and then it was a garage, then it was a gazebo, and then it was a hot tub, and there's a little building at the, uh, at the rear, as shown on the drawings. But, in fact, it got approval, uh, in nineteen thirty-nine, and in the mid eighties or so, I think I submitted to you, it was an inspection by the Health Department, and you noted that they, uh, they listed the occupants of the first floor and the basement. And then the other records that I found were, uh, from the, uh, the plans, because it's registered land, and the size of the lot, again, is the size of the lot, it's been that. The property's now well-maintained, uh, and before they went forward and added the second means of egress, which the architect says, if they do in fact sprinkle the building, then they won't need that escape window, because they'll have a sufficient second egress and a sprinkler. That's what the architect said. I had asked that they, uh, make the alterations, and when I drafted this...
Can I start here, second? It's a very important, when these come up, I want to make sure there's two separate means of egress.
Oh, there is, there's no question of that.
Okay, but now you talked about the fireman's window, which, which they have to have for a bedroom anyway.
Well, that's what I talked, that's what I told them.
Yeah.
In fact, when I drafted this and I was about to read it, I said, in terms of what we wanted to do, it was the addition, replacement of the windows, addition of a second means of egress, installation of a sprinkler, uh, and then we had the onsite packing, uh, that was two spaces within...
Okay, now, when you're saying sprinkler, you're saying the entire building will be sprinkled?
That's what I understood, yeah.
We, we, that's up to others, but usually if it's a three, it would be three units now, huh?
Correct, it's a change in use.
I know, so, no, I'm only saying, that's the sprinkler.
Sprinkler in the hallway, increment the cost of the whole building.
No, what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, when you, when you clustered it out, it made sense to your client, I don't...
Okay, we, we, I just want to clear that up.
Yeah.
Usually going with two to three, that now becomes a, uh, well, it's a separate unit that's, uh, makes it a sprinkler, yeah.
See, and you know if, if at one time, the first floor in the basement were one unit, in other words, the main unit was on the first floor, and then the additional space might have been used in the basement?
I can't tell from the decision in nineteen thirty-nine. I can say this, that I don't think whoever got it approved, they got approval also, the addresses were one thirty-nine, one forty-nine. When they got the approval to put a basement unit in, they also got approval to increase what I think was the building in the back from a one-family to a two-family, but that building's gone. And then when I looked through the cloud and the records, I found the, um, Health Department inspection, and I noted that the names, uh, of the tenants in the first floor in the basement were the same as the owner. So I could see that you could treat it as a, a family. The woman that owned the property was Paula Modica, and I think the listed tenant is, is a Modica on that Health Department sheet. So that, uh, it's been a laid-out unit, it's just, when they, when they acquired it and went to the building department, they said, you need to add a second means of egress, you need to put the window in, and then when they came to me, I said, you're going to, here's the good news, if you can do that, you're going to have to put sprinklers in, and are you prepared to put sprinklers in? And they came back to me and they said, yes.
Because it becomes an apartment house, goes from a two-family to a apartment house.
Correct.
And if you listed that in the assessments, it's, if it's approved.
Correct.
Now, you know, if this was a legal three, you wouldn't be here, I mean, so, clearly this, for some reason...
What happened, I mean, what happened in nineteen thirty-nine, I couldn't find any other record, and other than I think, I may have given it to you, but I can give it to you, it was a permit, it has got the Board of Appeals case number on it, but I don't know that they ever did it, I can't find, I looked at every, uh, plan at the registry of the...
You're just clearing up a doubt. You're clearing, even though it says on that permit that it was planned to...
Right, yeah, we were...
It was more than a doubt, it's not, it's not a three-family right now, it's a two...
Yeah, right, and I, and I also think that it certainly wasn't done to the code, today's code requiring.
Oh, so, yeah, right.
And so, the, the first step was, they met with the building department, and it was the building department that said to them, well, if you're going to do this, you need to put the window in, you need to have the second means of egress, and they thought that was all they had to do. When I went down and first looked at it with Patrick, I said, these two parking spaces in the driveway don't have a five-foot buffer. And the other reason I was concerned is, is that if you come in from Nahan Street, you're sort of backing out, there's no, uh, you know, there's not an eighteen-foot length, uh, and then five more feet, a twenty-three feet in length, from the, uh, driveway with fences, back out into the street. And then we discovered, and the clue was for the, to reach this home, that there was a right-of-way off of Tudor, which allowed, uh, to come in that way, to put a space there, and then they pointed out to me that they own the adjoining property, and in fact...
So they own the property over here where all the spaces are?
Yeah. And then the other thing is that when you go, I don't know if you get into backyard, but in the backyard inside yard, there's like a step up. There's a step up to the adjoining building to the-
Left if you're facing it.
Yeah, if you're facing it.
Yeah.
But they don't own that building. And then at the back, there's a step to get up towards this property where-
Yeah. Now, Mr. Vitale, the petition has submitted a letter saying, certifying that these two spaces will be there forever.
Yeah, they own-
To the board?
Well, they own it now.
Yeah.
But it doesn't matter. Usually there's a letter from the owner of this to this owner here certifying that these two spaces will be allotted to this petition right here.
In perpetuity.
Forever. And you have to have a certified, a professional landscape surveyor. Draw that up, those two spaces.
I think, did we plan to show that?
I don't see it here on this plan.
I've got this.
Yeah, he didn't show it again.
It's supposed to be a gate.
All right, so if it's approved, that's, you know, it could be, it could be granted with the permission, the stipulation. If that be done, that paperwork. Let's go from the owner here, which you are, to this.
No, 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 no.
Places might be separated sometime. So they have to, by a professional landscape surveyor.
Yeah, read it down the plan. I think-
No, but I'm saying in this area here.
Yeah, or we'll get them to do that.
Probably done the plan for here. This space is kind of, can they move that over?
Yeah, I mean, I parked in one of those spaces.
Well, wait a minute, yeah, you can't get out. You'd have to be in Valerina. Can he move it over? Does it interfere with the front park or something?
There's some landscape right there.
There's landscaping in the front, yes, on the bow hedges.
Yeah, just grass and then there's like a little stone. I believe this-
You could move that over.
I think there's a little bit of a stone, the wall, where you come in for the driveway.
But wait a minute. There's not much room here. There's no buffer way, Mr. Vitale says. It's very important, especially so close. We don't know where the parking is on over here on the other side. So you think you can move that? What is it now? Is it a foot or two, two feet?
A foot and a half stone wall. About a foot and a half high?
Excuse me, could you come up and explain to the board? You know, we're trying to dope this out.
So there's a foot and a half, so it's about a foot and a half high? A brick wall with probably bluestone on the top or something, or concrete?
Wait a minute, right here where the number two spaces?
The two spaces go, that both people can back straight up. It's between one-
I know. Let me turn and see if you can see it. This is the space I'm talking about.
Oh, that's-
Can these two be moved over?
Yes, you'd have to take down part of that stone wall.
Well, how much?
However many you need to move it over.
The two spots were being used as part of the space.
Yeah, I understand that.
There's room for probably two more cars there.
Problem, but if it's gonna interfere with the beauty of the landscape.
Yeah, the front of the house looks, you can let me-
At least wait.
Absolutely.
I mean, I don't want to go in the front.
See, I think I got a picture.
Then it's a parking lot. Then it's a parking-
Well, you got a picture. It's like that.
Yeah, those trees and then there's a holly over in the corner.
We weren't working to change. No, we understand. We understand.
This is what the landscape looks like right now.
Will we call it like you started? The neighbor used to sit on that all the time.
Hello, what's your first name?
My name is Sandy Frank. I'm across the street.
I don't see the space there. But let me put it this way, in some way you can move there. It adds some more space in the right side.
It has to go this way.
Correct. So the whole front of the building would basically almost all be parked?
No, no, it's only moving it back.
He wants to keep two spaces at the same moment.
Yeah. Just maybe, maybe a couple of feet or something. We don't know. Right now-
There's room for that.
Right now you'd have to be, that move there. Get out of that car.
I get out of the car and walk to the back. I know it's on this side.
Well, can you move a foot or two maybe?
Can I just add something to this? Because I've lived there for 60 years.
Are you for this?
I, yes, I miss this note in the corner.
Well, as soon as they- She didn't say for. She said, "Are you for this?" You don't know.
No, I have not.
Well, then when it's, it's not your turn yet.
You gotta have it.
When it's your turn, I'll let you know.
Okay.
You can sit down.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're trying to minimize destruction to the front of the house.
I'm with you. I'm with you. I'm only talking to the man with a foot or two. We don't know.
So this, let me just ask Patrick. Do you see this car right here?
Yes.
Is that the second space? I parked over here.
One year this block.
Okay. So, Mr. Calm, when I parked, I parked on this side. That's the car. So the two spaces would be, this shows one vehicle in the drive.
Right.
So what I see is this lipo.
Yes, the lipo's in the back.
And then, I don't know where the steps begin and end. I mean, that's a plan that could be moved.
I think it, well, let me put it this way, Mr. Vitale. It's probably not spent a lot of time on. If it can be moved, if they can, please, if they can give more space for when you get out the car, a vehicle's a foot, a foot and a half or two feet. Where the floor would like to sit now.
Yeah, it's, we need to tell me.
I just, I just put a B here.
Yeah, well, no, we want to do it.
If, if there's, but I'm describing
I'm gonna, I wanna say.
A lot of nice landscape which we have.
When I was down there Sunday, the two cars were parked there. I don't know how you people opened the doors to get out.
Yeah, that's us too. And so it's not on me, Jesus. All right, speak. Go ahead, do what you can. It doesn't show the cars.
No, it doesn't show you the cars. The cars were there Sunday and you couldn't open the doors.
It doesn't show the cars. Thank you anyway.
Okay, but that's what the front looks like.
No, I understand. I understand. A hundred years, it looks beautiful.
Can you drive right now from Tudor Street onto this property?
There's a right-of-way that goes right to the-
I didn't ask that. Can you drive, is the right-of-way open all the way through?
There's a swinging gate.
There's a swinging gate. I don't know whose gate that is. We didn't put that up.
So if there's a swinging gate, it's not a-
Where's the swinging gate on the property? How big's the gate?
Well, it's not our gate.
It is the house. If it's not your gate, how's it a right-of-way?
Yes, it is.
Well, it's a registered right-of-way. It's recorded land. There's no question that there was a right-of-way from Tudor Street to this property. The only reason it exists is to get to this property. I have the registered land.
Where's the right-of-way?
That right-of-way was probably there for the house that was in the back at one time.
Right. I think you're right.
Where's the right-of-way? Do you know? Like, where are lots on that?
I have the registered land plan.
How big's the gate at the end of the right-of-way?
So you come in this way.
Way out there.
And you park right there.
How big is the gate at the end of the right-of-way?
It's about 10 feet tall. It's a big sort of gate. It has two doors.
But you don't own the gate?
Well, I have to look and see. I think the right-of-way is what Mr. Cole said, but it's registered land, so.
But you just said you don't own the gate.
I-
I'm trying to, I'm trying to, you're trying to catch up there. So you said, "Do you own the gate or don't you?"
I can't speak to that because-
Well, he's the property manager. He doesn't know.
The right-of-way exists. The first question was, "Does the right-of-way exist?" The answer is yes. And I was looking to get the registered land plan without reading the words that created the right-of-way. Someone created it. I can't speak with certainty to what the purpose was, though I think that Mr. Cole is right, that it was to get access to another home.
So let me ask you another, before you even answer the first question that I asked. The first question I did ask was, "Can you drive right now from Tudor Street onto 139 Han Street's property, down the right-of-way?"
If the gate is open.
So do you have accessibility to open that gate?
We believe so. That's what we think the right-of-way gave us. Here's the registered land.
So basically parking space three isn't really used.
Correct. No, it didn't, it didn't exist before. Here's the registered land plan, and it shows a building at the back. And that's what I'm saying to you.
We're planning on putting two spots.
The right-of-way is 14 feet wide.
You're putting with two spots where parking space three is? No, no, we're on our adjacent property.
But here, I'd be glad to get into the registered land plan.
Sam, slow down. I'm just trying to get my bearing on what's going on on the property. You're showing me a parking space here in the back of the house. It took almost, you know, four or five minutes for you guys to get together on a conclusive answer that you could drive in here, open the gate, and park there. Now, you both just said that no one ever parks here. So basically, does this parking space exist or does it not?
It would exist. We provided, we wanted to provide it. It doesn't, it hadn't existed before because we thought, when they bought the property, we saw the gate. But then I got the registered land plan that shows a right-of-way. And my recollection of the words is that that right-of-way exists for all purposes of the city of London for porting vehicle or travel. And this is done by the land court that registers. But you'll see on that plan, and you can see the initial AB, that there was a dwelling at the rear.
Yeah, I did.
And so that, I think Mr. Cole surmised was right, that the reason they had the, there was no other way to get to that building at the rear.
The garden house?
The garden house is here, it's square. That's not-
No, this is, it was a dwelling. There was a dwelling. And I think I said in 1939, somebody got approval to make that dwelling a two-family, but it's not there.
The right-of-way still is.
Oh, the right-of-way still exists?
That's right. And it'll be there for a while.
The only people that understand was that right-of-way and the land court.
That's right.
Ask him about this little strip land over here.
14 feet wide, and that's why.
And that's a big yard.
On your plot plan, on this plot plan, you've got this area right here that seems to go up there, something like that. Whose property is that? Does that belong to 139? In other words, you're showing a gate onto this strip of land that is separated.
That's what I said to you. If you went in the backyard, there's a step up that goes to a building that they don't own.
Where's, what don't they own?
The one beside it, right, immediately beside it. And here's another registered land plan.
Which side are you talking about? Because I walked down here. I didn't sense that the land came out and blocked me. I just kind of walked back here. I went, I went back to this building.
Over here.
I thought I saw our gate.
Over here, there's a step to this building.
Okay, there was a, is it a garage? I thought it was a garage there. It looked like a gate to a garage.
Yeah, to this property over here, there's like a little piece of stone right there.
It was weird. It looked like an entrance to a garage.
And that's what we thought, too. But so-
So why would they have an entrance to someone else's?
Because that may be another reason why the right-of-way exists. But you see, the right-of-way doesn't cross the land. It only comes to the property line. So if someone to drive in, the only place they can drive to is this lot.
Yeah. And since it's 14 feet wide, here's, it's a pretty functional space.
So does this little strip over here where the gate is belong to this property?
Which gate are we speaking, over here?
Talking about-
Parking spaces five to four.
See this, see this line?
They own that property. That's where, yeah. That's where we proposed to put the two extra spaces.
Over here.
That Mr. Calum asked.
So this little strip here belongs to you?
Correct.
Correct.
Right, so is they gonna get a letter that says in perpetuity that they can always park here and use this?
Correct.
If it's granted.
That has to be by a professional landscape surveyor. All that has to be by a professional landscape surveyor.
And they'll record it.
Well, the other thing is that I can't speak to the property at the back, but I know all the others are registered land. So it's gonna have to be done to the specifications of the registry, land registration.
Yeah, right.
Have to be recorded.
Right.
Yes, yes. And what do they have for a land now?
Just wanted to see if I had the description.
When the snow is out, who's gonna shovel the path all the way back here to this place? I'm just asking you to get from this here up to here.
These people own, they have their own rules.
We have a power, we have a coven.
Right. And they remove stuff.
That may not speak.
Yes, that may not speak. We have an outside contractor, a new contractor, who does our-
So you own this house here? The house we're talking about?
Yes.
The properties are owned, yeah, at the same end.
We bought that. You could be on the properties adjacent to it.
They're working on your property now.
You own with a fire, yes.
Oh, there was a fire in there?
11 Beach Street. We had an unfortunate circus. That was back in January 27th. So a young man took his life.
Oh, no, no.
It doesn't, it looked like it was just the back of the building, but given the fact it breached the roof and all the wires.
Look at that.
They look pretty extensive to what they're going to.
This is the description I was looking for. "There is a pertinent to the above-scribed land. A right-of-way over the westerly 14 feet of said lot being shown in said land to be used for all purposes for which public streets are commonly used by the owners and occupants of what's A and B as described in a deed from Roselda Olonoff to Jacob Metzer dated June 25th, 1946, filed as document number 49762 in said registry." So it's a right-of-way to be used for all purposes for which public streets are used in the city. That's, I'll give you, this is the recorded deed back, let's see when. Yeah, 2017. The deed of the property to these people.
When we purchased the property, there was three occupants that gave notice to keep the person in the back, bottom floor coming to have to leave because it wasn't an illegal.
Well, when you purchase the property, notice them?
When we purchased the property, there were three occupants. There was someone on the top floor, first floor in the basement.
Oh, okay.
And we gave them notice in the basement that-
It was illegal.
It was an illegal unit, so.
I think it was the property.
When I looked at the window, I mean, it looked like everything was all done.
In the basement? There's still some old work to be done.
Well, I mean, you could see it was working.
To make it lawful, you have to, the building department told me needed to add the window and the means of egress.
And you did that? Well, you put the new means of egress in?
Oh, we're prepared to do that. But then, when they told me that, I said, "I don't think that's gonna be enough. I think you're gonna have to put a sprinkler."
Absolutely.
So if you couldn't get approval for three, you could just make it living space up and down. We're not gonna do sprinklers. And now what was your connection with District 45?
District 45 is, we own the property. We have another division for restaurants. We have five restaurants, so we open up District 45.
So you own, you own that restaurant and all the others?
We own across the street, 42, 46, 60.
We own the board when it's gonna come in before us, yeah.
Local one, two. And we just bought 140, we just bought 47, 49.
We buy up Lewis Street?
Yes. So we're trying to, we make some improvements. If you look at the changes to the property since we bought it, we repaired the back, we've painted the front.
Big change.[1656.03]
We're in the process. We petitioned to remove one of the residents on the third floor because we don't think it's a proper resident for one of our properties. So we've made that, we've taken that person to court.
Any other questions on the board?
I don't know. There's some lady wanting to speak.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none, hearing is closed for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Anyone in opposition?
Actually, I have one more question. So just on the parking, so are we gonna, you know, you said something about us getting a site visit?
No, I'm gonna recommend them, but I personally wanna go down with these guys.
I'm just confused about the right of way and I just wanted to show you when we pass that, sorry.
You wanna take a visit, did I say?
I would like to see that right of way and parking space and, you know, I just.
Right away, if you're coming back, comes in on 2nd Street.
Yeah, yeah, I can see 2nd Street. And it was just like, I know you mentioned that. I thought it was a good idea because it's a little confusing.
Well, see, some of us on the board would like to go and take a look at the property. I mean, we've been all around the outside, but we'd like to look further.
Then he's the one to speak to because when I went, I called him and then I, that's fine, we'll do that. But then, that's when I saw these steps, which I couldn't do that.
I wasn't aware of the right of way in the fifth parking space, space possible.
Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. Give your name and address to the secretary, please.
Irene Smolina, 135 137 Nahan Street, Lynn, Massachusetts. Opposition is hard word. I don't come from a neighborhood that repose each other. As long as I've lived there, 60 years. It was a hard job, but we kept up the house, I thought, very nicely, and I'm still there. There are some things that I don't like about this whole project is the owner, I never met the owner, he never came forward to talk to me about this project. And not that, you know, I'm, I could make a snap decision. But there are some things that do affect me. And you talked about the driveway. Is it Mr. Wood, is it?
You said about the right of way? When you say driveway?
Excuse me, I do pay taxes on that. That driveway in the back of my house.
The right of way?
Yeah. And there is a fence at the bottom. The fence is not at the top, see? So you could get a different picture. You have to drive down to the bottom of the hill, which separates the properties. And I did not put that fence up. It was Monica that had put it up because she wanted privacy for her garden and the pool and everything she put in the backyard.
Which one was she, she owned it yet?
Oh, she owned it.
She owned it previously, yes.
I got you.
Yeah.
Has anyone used this in your time, do you recall?
Well, I looked into it, you know, for utility, whatever, they have to get in there and guys that were doing stairs here in the back. What's that? Is that the stairs I just put in?
It's a little oak coffin, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's for people with stairs.
So they would drive through?
Yeah, they drove through. I left them in.
So the gate is yours? You control the gate?
I control, no, I don't control the gate.
So how'd you let them in?
Because I'm the only one there.
They couldn't just open the gate? You don't through without, you weren't home?
That's right.
Why?
Because it's locked from the other side.
So you control the gate?
Well, I go around and open another one.
Was it locked from the inside or locked from the?
It locks from the inside. So that would indicate what?
You need to be home for them to use that?
That, it belongs to that property.
This property, your property?
No, the fence belongs to, well, it's not Monica's anymore. That property.
Well, do they not? Okay.
Yeah.
The lock is on their side, right? On the other property?
On the other property, yes, yes.
Oh, so you have to walk around here?
Yeah.
And you have to pee?
Now. So I understand now that these gentlemen own the property with the fire, that had the fire. And I sympathize with them. That was a tragic thing. A lot of people got dispersed and whatever. But I think they ought to thank our neighbors because since that fire destroyed the top floor there, they had been working on that property all summer, up until now. And, I mean, every single day, you can't imagine, I mean, you just can't imagine unless you went through it. Nobody said anything. Everybody's been very patient with him. And he has not come forward to say thank you to the neighbors at all. You know, that's beside the point. I have a question for you. Are you the engineer in the office or no? Are workers allowed to work on Sunday outside of the house? I could imagine inside is all right, maybe, but outside, are they allowed to? All right. Well, if I told you they've been working putting siding on
On special floors.
But that has nothing to do with what they're here for tonight.
Oh, okay, okay. But you are right. Okay. That was a question I had.
Were you aware that there were people living in that basement all along? And you didn't care?
Not really. They live there, but they sort of lived with the people on the first floor, you know?
Where did everybody park?
I'm sorry?
Where did everybody park?
Ah, that's a question. On the Han Street. And I had to fight for a spot. I have two spots in front of my house. And Monica was supposed to have one spot in the bus stop there too. So she's got a bus stop in front of her house there.
What was the street park? Street park is?
Street park.
Street park is for us come for our service, not.
Yeah, oh, yeah. In the winter time, it's not bad. Like right now, it's not bad, but in the summertime, it really gets stuffy.
Can I ask you, how many parking spaces do you have on your property? Legal parking space?
Just two in front.
No, on your property?
On my property, I can't, well, I can't, I've never blocked the driveway.
I don't park. I'm asking you, how many parking spaces on your property, not in front of your property? That's.
In the backyard, right?
On the right of way?
Do you have a driveway here?
Yeah. On that driveway, I park. It's a right of way.
So she does not have her own driveway?
A parking plan, no.
Everyone has to submit a plan like that.
No.
But you don't have a plan. See this right here? Okay, I'm asking you, how many, how many legal parking spaces do you think you would have on your property?
No, well, if we put in one back of another.
Legal means on your property. The right of way is not, not your, don't you mean come the right of way?
Hand park on the right of way?
Oh, okay. Well, then.
Okay, so your parking?
Just two. Are they on your land or are they in front of your house?
They're just in front of my house.
So you don't have any?
And 2nd Street side, we can get a couple too on 2nd Street.
But we're saying you don't have any access on your own property. You'll have a driveway, yeah. Just curious.
So when it snows and you have, excuse us, excuse us, when it snows and you have to get off the street, where do you put your car?
Well, we'd be.
Sold the driveway and right of way?
Pull them all into that access.
In the right of way?
And then everybody shovels in.
So how long have they been in 135 Nahan Street?
60 years, if you can believe it.
So was the right of way ever your driveway and then it became a right of way? How it's going on?
They never changed it. They never.
And you pay taxes on that piece of property?
So how's it a right of way, huh?
She doesn't own the right of way. Read the deed we have. She doesn't own the right of way.
What, does she pay taxes, you think?
I don't believe you do.
Who saw, how did right of way come about?
We record. You have the deed. You have to go back to when it was created. But in the deed that my people got, it describes that deed.
Do you have the decree for that right of way?
I could get it if you should.
Did you sign the right of way in the place? The right of way is before 60 years?
I'll get the deed back and I'll. The deed has a document number on it.
It has a decree.
It has a number, yeah. If I saw the number, I could then get it.
When you bought the house 60 years ago, was it a right of way or a driveway?
I would want to say.
Says it was filed in 1946 as document number 49762. So I could, you're glad to get it for you. It's a registered land. But it would appear that it was in a deed, as I read, from this Olonoff to Metzer in 1946.
So are you aware then that if this goes through, that this was approved, you would have no more parking on your property?
It's not on that property. You don't have.
Correct. I'm just making sure that all the, all the wheels are spinning there.
Yeah, well, that's.
We can't override the land court.
Can I think of, you happen to be?
Says it was taken, taking an easement for water purposes by the colonel of the master.
The house was down like that on my side and the other house on 2nd Street was down like that on the other side. There's no picking off of it, you know? I do have a loose space at the porch.
We can't overturn our land courts.
I'm just trying to get the, figure it out.
No, I know.
Because without that right of way, the parking doesn't work down there. I mean, I mean, you know as well as I do.
Well, yeah, we, whatever they've been doing, they've been doing it. We, it's not before us right now. We can't, we can't. That's our land court. We can't.
I get that, but I'm asking a question because they're looking to put a parking space at the end of that right of way. They're telling us parking space number three for this property is gonna be at the end of that right of way. I wanna understand how the right of way works if it's gonna be a functional parking space. That's what I'm trying to figure out here. This, this woman here uses it as a driveway. These guys are saying it's an open right of way where the parking space at the end is what they're proposing. I wanna make sure that she understands.
There's no parking space in a right of way, period. Especially on land court.
How do you get the parking space number three closed?
Down the right.
Thank you.
Which is what the right of way said.
I get it, I get it. I'm trying.
It must be some.
So what's the way through this here? You guys have proposed a parking space at the end of the right of way?
But is that all that?
We're trying.
Again, it's your land.
We're trying, we can't provide onsite passing, okay? So you gotta balance this. If we can do onsite passing, if that's somebody else can't, that's what happens with me.
I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about.
Other people understand what's actually happening here and what's potentially gonna happen if this happens. That's what I'm trying to make them understand. I'm not saying that it's right or wrong or indifferent. That's reality.
If it goes through.
You can't.
I do not park.
They're coming in here and they're gonna.
They're putting a parking space, one parking space?
At the end of it, on the front. Not on the right of way.
So they have to come down here to get to that, right? So who's gonna open the gates? Well, she said she didn't put it there.
No, but I'm saying whoever there, whoever there shouldn't have put the gate there. But they had it because they had a pool there. No, they had a pool.
It's all by this house, this property here. They can't really park on either of the right of ways. It's just a.
You could come down before you get required or here.
She could use the right of way as an access point. If she could park here, she could use the right of way.
I'd park with my property, with respect to this. As I said to Mr. Sosun, we're trying to put onsite parking that is required. So it may never have been a parking space as a reader, but it certainly is accessible, okay? And it's good fortune that they own the adjoining property because we had choices when we looked at this. When I first looked at it, I saw two spaces and I said two things. These two spaces are not lawful and you need to remove. Then I found that there was a right of way and there's a space at the back. And you read that description, it said to get to Lot Z and B, so. And that's what I think. Somebody described, you know, described as a step up to what used to be a garage. So the only way that, the right of way just goes to my guy's property. It doesn't go across my guy's property. So people had access to this lot, I think it's a fault of the way because of the amount of these. The only reason we put the current space is not to take something away from us. They described it to me, she parks, I mean, she can describe it, like three vehicles at the back of her home, like either a deck or whatever she has. So I don't dispute that she was doing that, but the fact of the matter is, as Mr. Kalman said, the difference with the right of way is that people have rights over it all the way. And that certain rights of way say like pedestrian traffic. But this one says, the magic land, says for all purposes which a street, a public street can be used. Well, that means you could traverse over it by automobile. But if all of this hangs in the balance, we never did this to take anything away from this woman. We just did it to comply with the rules. So I did not, I think when I drafted this, I drafted it in a particular manner, I'll go back and read it, to account for the fact that we didn't have lawful spaces. But if the board were to say, okay, get rid of the space at the rear. Now we've only got four spaces because we've got the two in the adjoining property and the two out front. But the only reason we put the space there and it's lawful and lawful means it meets the design standards. You can get in and out, was that, so. Yeah, but you know, in all fairness, you know, you could drive in and you had a back all the way the hell out of there. That is an awful spot to put a car, right there. It's really, when you look at it, I don't know how you get in and out. Patrick will tell you. And when I first saw this, I said, you can get a space there. But Mrs. Curly's not gonna like what we're gonna do to the back of the chair. And I told her.
I get there, yes.
And then I went and looked and Paulo had a, I think a hot tub, sauna, we got that. They had all kinds of uses at the back, okay? Which butts the other piece of property that goes up a little bit. But we were trying to satisfy the requirements for the requisite number of onsite spaces. If this space, so it was not done with any design to take away from this woman any spaces that she may have been using, okay? And that's why you asked about the gate. It isn't clear because, do you remember when that went up?
I don't remember what year, no.
No, but I mean, it's been a long time.
Let me ask a question here of this gentleman. Do you have a space that you could allow for her to park on your property at all?
We have to take.
How is she gonna get you with? It's so far.
Are you getting three cars under here now?
That's what I was told. Did you? You know something? We could be here all night long.
Yeah, that's right.
I wanna take, I'd like to almost table this thing and then have a site visit between now and on next May and January. Because I think now we're going around in circles. Yeah, and, but I'm saying, you get access and you talk to Patrick and you need something to move about her back there.
But we need to propose perhaps if the zoning board gave her various, have like four spaces and then she would be able to maintain this.
We never, we never did this to take anything away from.
I know, that's what I'm saying. That sounds like potential problem, I saw. Just something to lay out there.
We'll go take a look at it, maybe we have some suggestions, but, I mean, I think everybody's kind of, gotta work together here. Sounds good. So I asked Mr. Janino, when she was expressing this, and Patrick described it to me, I said, you guys appear to give up that space, then she wouldn't have to do whatever. They said, yes. But when they said, well, I really asked for less than the required number, I asked for the design standards and time given in the book, I think. As I told you, petitions I write and what get advertised is.
But why can't they give them another space where the other two spaces are?
Well, that may be, but you wanna take a look and.
Well, I don't wanna see, they're gonna put hot tub down in here in the back of the yard, is this on the top? They're gonna put hot tub in the backyard?
It's like cornfield, right? Yeah, it's already there.
In the backyard?
Yeah.
We can't sell anything else.
It was, it was sort of like they had, they used it in the backyard, like the zippo or sauna.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition, in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in, you want to speak in opposition?
Well, it's like you didn't have a place to. They answered some questions, which I had, was the concern about parking.
Well, you could either be you are for it or you're not for it. What are you?
I'm, I wasn't, I have to say I wasn't for it because I, because I didn't know what the situation was and it hasn't all been set.
So what's your question?
So my concern was about the parking, which they've obviously addressing.
No one's addressed it.
Or trying to address.
Trying to address, yeah.
All of my questions about that.
Right, so, but in front of the house, there was, there is technically parking. But it is illegally parking because when they took, they took down a light that was a streetlight. And on the streetlight was the bus stop. And that's the legal bus stop.
They have nothing to do with this petition.
But that has, but that was street parking. So if they put the light back up and that's.
Street park, we have no control over.
Correct, right. But, but there's density that, my concern about parking, off-street parking, was the high density of parking in the neighborhood due to people at 300 Lynn Shore Drive who park on Nahan Street.
But they have that, this, no.
They're trying to.
No, I think, I think density is a legitimate issue. I'm sorry, I wanna hear about.
It impacts the neighborhood as well as, because there's high density, especially during rush hour, coming up and down Nahan Street and people parking there. Backing out is an issue when I'm directly across the street. And when I back out, I look and say, okay, nobody's backing out. Nobody's coming up the hill or down the hill and before I back out. But, so they have to back straight out. In the wintertime, there were times when, when they parked in the driveway, they were actually. they were actually blocking the sidewalk and you had to walk onto the street to get around the cars. Because it, that was previous owners who had cars that were blocking the sidewalk.
Because the spaces are too, too shallow?
Yeah, they're shallow. Yes, it's shallow. Um...
And then in the summer, you have the other issue where, when they redid the Han, they did a beautiful job. They took away 300 or so parking spaces. And those people are all now in your neighborhood.
They're all back up the hill and that's, and it's not, we haven't asked for resident only. So, you know, they, they need to go to the beach. That's fine. I'm happy they can park there.
Yep.
They are only cars, but they're trucks, semi, semi trucks.
And we have, and there are lots of people who drive those vehicles that transport people, who come home and they park their cars. They're there, those buses are there overnight during the day.
On the street.
On the street.
On the street.
So lots of those. The only, other question I had though was it's a basement apartment and then is there a water issue? There is a, a white, a white pump of pipe that comes from the basement with water that comes all the way out through that and stone wall, the retaining wall at the sidewalk that is for water that comes out of the front of the house. So there, is there a water issue in the basement? Because there is that pump and at high tide...
You got a sump up in the basement?
Yeah, three.
But they have, if they have to, it has to be connected legally. It has to be connected legally. If they, they have a sump button, they just can't eject it all over the sidewalk.
Well, this white pump...
I'm always saying it's against the law.
Okay, so when you're looking, you see that it's on the...
We have a little revenue.
Right, you'll see that.
I'm bringing my magnifying glass.
Okay, and then my, and my, I have a friend who used to live there. Her mother owned the house and she and her husband lived in the basement, but she said there was no legal kitchen, so you had to go upstairs. But it was awkward because you had to do those stairs and there was no other, um, regress.
Yeah, what about this young lady?
Is that on the basement there now?
There's a stair where you're talking about.
Young lady in the middle. Do you have something to say?
Okay.
Yes, you do.
Very sweet.
Yeah.
There were incredible numbers of people that used to come and go from that house.
It's gonna be there. It's gonna be there.
They were living in that recently.
Young lady, please give me a name.
Yes, I'm Susie Davis. I live on 50 Purdon Road in Swanscott, Mass. Um, I have visited with Irene for good seven or eight years now. And my concern is also the same as Sandy here, is the integrity of the neighborhood. It's incredible. I'm sure it's changed over 60 years. Um, I live on Purdon Road and I have seen big changes, obviously, traffic for the reasons of many, not just the, the beach closing. Uh, people like to U-turn directly in front of the house, going the wrong way. They like to come and, uh, come the one-way Tudor Street, but they're going the wrong way. Um, you take an easement and you make it traffic-wise, it's an easement for both properties. I'm not against anything going forward. I'm concerned about things going forward that are reckless. Reckless for the neighborhood, reckless that it's too dense. I mean, it's intense there. I want you to walk. I want you to let her know when you're going so that you can actually see. There's a lot of confusion. There's legal representation and he's big on the legal representation. He's paid to be here. She isn't having legal... I approve of legal representation. I've been there and done that and I understand it. And I believe that all of you want the right thing to happen. The right thing is going and making sure that this is the right thing to do, whether it's having, um, walls moved insufficient. I mean, when I got this and I'm going, okay, non-conforming, undersized, insufficient frontage, minimally, I'm like, okay, these are all buzzwords to me saying, what's wrong with this property? But we're gonna make it bigger and we're gonna have more people live here. Are you gonna live next to this? And that's all I wanna say. But I want you to really consider what this says. Not just what they've said, but what you and your hearts really believe should happen.
We have to consider the best interest of the city of Lynn.
Well, the city of Lynn, our people who have been here for 60 years are gonna be here in the future. That whole street, I've seen amazing pictures of how that street's changed, okay? So just go sit on her porch, not on their porch, but on her porch and watch what happens, okay? How many people spin around in front of that house? You add more people into a residence, okay, what does that do? One car, one person, how many friends, how many family members are coming, okay, more cars. I understand, it's a street. They have a right to park. I park on the street to visit as well, all right? But it's dangerous. If you're gonna impact one facility, he owns the facility on Lynn Shore Drive that he's doing an amazing rehab on. So now he wants to come down the easement of the right of way and he wants to take his driveway. And you know what? Pretty soon, he's gonna be going right after the property that you're doing over. So we've got all of this traffic going like this, okay? To change what was a small two-family with a basement apartment and now it's turning into a lot more people, a lot more vehicles. And that's why everybody's going nuts because there are so many vehicles everywhere.
You said a two apartment, a two family basement apartment?
Well, it wasn't all, well, I wasn't there when it was...
What I'm saying that they're here specifically for a certain purpose and they wanna, they wanna make it legal, that basement apartment.
Right.
That's what it is. And they, they're submitting all, they're submitting all the plans, the specifications, the requirements.
That's what you're supposed to do.
And everything. We have nothing to do with the streets. It's the city council that has that.
But if you allow them to go ahead, okay, and give them the opportunity to have more residents in this particular place, you're adding more to the density and possibly potential accidents on the streets that you're not responsible for.
But you just said it's been people, I mean, all along.
No, it was, yeah, it was just illegal. They're trying to make it legal. We're gonna consider our...
And that's basically what my point is.
Typical all the time.
We're not questioning anything.
And I'm glad, I'm really glad because I'm glad you're questioning it.
Yeah.
And that's the important thing. That's basically what I really wanted you to do.
We're not rushing anything.
Perfect. Thank you.
Do we have a request?
No, I got it.
She's got it.
50 Purdon Road, Swanscott.
Attorney Vitale.
Yeah.
Since someone here mentioned that they had been in that house before and Mr. Cole agreed that, um, there was never a kitchen downstairs in that basement, would you say that then that basement was really with the first floor?
I said that that basement was not a legal unit.
No, no, no. Did you say that you had been in that house or you...
No, I would, no, I did not. My friend had been in the, lived there.
Lived there, yes.
But that was too old.
But there was, but there was no kitchen?
That's true.
Yeah.
So they wouldn't have to go upstairs if there was no kitchen? I, I'm not, I'm not talking about that. What I'm saying is, does that, do you feel that that would mean that that basement really went with the first floor apartment?
I said I didn't know, but I know that the boiler peels in 1939 approved the basement apartment. Yeah.
Yeah, that's 70 some odd years ago.
Well, that's what I know.
They never did it. It's confused.
Any, any other, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else in opposition? Hearing none, the hearing is closed for those who should just speak in opposition.
I know this case intended for the next regular meeting.
I have a letter here from, uh, Councilor Calucci writing in support of the request. This request results from the willingness of the applicant to comply with all applicable building code and the zone ordinance provisions in favorable consideration to allow alteration of a basement apartment to allow exclusive occupancy in an apartment building at 139 Han Street, is asked. I have one more question for you, Leona. If you're giving up two parking spaces from all those buildings that you own?
Yes.
Who are you taking those parking spaces away from in that building? I wanna know how, I wanna know how many...
No, yes, it's no one.
Well, how many apartments do you have and how many spaces do you have?
The building is granted. There's no parking requirement. There are 30 or so spaces. The parking requirement for that address is zero.
Thank you.
They own, uh, eleven Beach, they own seventeen...
I know you own everything. I understand. Well, you're trying to...
No, but I'm saying we use some parking at seventeen Beach. People that live at seventeen Beach or apartment. How many units are they all in the other? It's nineteen and eleven. I think mostly one, but...
Now, Patrick, before you leave, can you come up here so we can decide when we can go and look at this property? It'll be easier, don't you think?
If we can. Yeah, are, are we done with the, are you...
He made a motion to continue.
That's why I'm in there.
Yep. Second, absolutely.
Motion made by Mr. Mr. Callen, seconded by Mr. Cole to continue this to the next regular meeting. January 2nd.
January 2nd.
Is it January 2nd?
January 2nd.
Wow. Okay, come on up, Patrick. All those opposed?
Aye.
Opposed?
What was the motion?
Continue.
To continue it to the next regular meeting of January 2nd.
Oh, that's the next meeting, January 2nd?
Yeah.
Mr. White?
Yes, to continue.
Mr. Yasson?
Yep.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes, to continue.
I don't know if we can decide tonight, I wonder. But she should leave his card.
All right, why don't you leave your card?
Leave your card with Mary.
Because I know...
Yeah, cards are all about.
I know we can't, I know we can't all go at the same time.
We could try, I mean, if you want.
Well, if you're gonna have to go, we can.
That's gonna be...
Okay. Yeah.
We're gonna meet, we're gonna meet, Mary.
I can't. I thought we did.
For what?
Just quick, did you guys look at the schedule and the thing that, um, Clint wants you to do?
Clint wants one?
We want that I see, we want that we have a lot of...
I couldn't hear you.
I make a motion to adjourn?
What's the matter?
I just couldn't hear what you were saying.
Oh.
Well, she don't explain.
Motion made to adjourn.
Okay.
All the way.
Aye, aye.